Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil Link. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oil Link Greg Hill Lane. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody, really glad you're here today.
We also have Colin and Julie here from our team. Hey guys, glad you're here.
Hello.
How's it doing everyone?
And you watching today, we are so happy you are here. Today we're going to be talking about marketing, specifically strategies and tools to market the next big thing that you want to offer. This is for you if you offer workshops, if you plan to or currently offer courses, programs, challenges, free or paid, although I think a lot of what we'll be focusing on today is going to benefit you most. If you are running something that is paid, but if you want to talk about free options and how you might scale down something like this, we'll have the opportunity to do that after we get through today's training. And I'll give a couple of notes as to how you can scale this back just a little bit to make things more effective if you are offering something for free. So again, welcome. Let us know in the chat where you're coming in from. This is a free live get together that we have every Thursday at noon US Eastern time. It's an opportunity for anyone who is a Young Living brand partner to get together, learn more about ways to put themselves out there, grow as a personal brand. And then of course, from there grow as a brand partner, we at Get Oil have everything that you need to do all of those things, all under one roof. And on these Thursday calls, you learn quite a bit about how you can use your good oiling system to do all of the stuff that'll help you grow. So welcome. We're thrilled to have you here. Share this with your teams. And of course, be sure to stick around and learn how you can get access to all of our upcoming calls, all of our past calls, and even spend some time together on a call, just like this one, learning how to grow in the way that you see fit for yourself. So team, we're going to hop out a video. We're going to get into some slides. We have a lot to get into today. Really excited to share this with you guys. And again, just go ahead and get into the chat or excited to see you. So you've got Arizona, Philly. We've got several folks from Canada. We've got Florida. Welcome you guys. So very excited to have you here with us today. Let me change the way that I'm sharing here. Um, forgive me just a second. Okay. All right, here we go. Apologies. Think I've got it. Perfect. Here we go. Welcome. We're talking about our marketing checklist. We do have an actual checklist prepared for you. I'm going to go over the contents of it here. So let's not jump to it just yet. We'll be sharing it here in just a bit. But this is actually going to be a checklist that you can walk through if you are launching a workshop, of course, a challenge, a program, or anything of that kind. So today we're going to talk about planning your marketing for your courses, workshops, programs, challenges, and more. We'll get into our checklist and resources. And of course, as always, we'll have live help and Q and A. We did have someone sign up. I see you here Debbie. I'll be calling on you in the latter half of this call for us to work together. Now, if you are here today looking for help and support, you've got three of the absolute most qualified, not of three actual, the actual three most qualified people to answer your questions here today on this call. So you can put those into the Q and A and you can get an answer from Brett, from Greg, Colin, and Julie. Whether or not this has to do, your question has to do with today's topic of discussion. If you're watching this as a replay and would like to join us on a live call, you can go to good oiling.com/weeklyworksession. And if you would like to work together live, like we will be doing here with Debbie in just a little bit, you can go to good oiling.com/web site review to save yourself a spot on an upcoming Thursday session. And if you would like to hand off some of what you're doing, you want someone else to do some of the work for you, maybe that's design. Maybe that's strategy, it's tech stuff on the backend, or maybe you just want to hire someone to slow down and walk you through things step by step in terms of what you need. You can go to get oiling.com/concierge to learn more and get started. Now, let me know in the chat. What do you have in the works? Do you have something big that you're working on? Are you working on a course or a program? Do you want to launch a challenge, maybe a group experience? What does that look like for you? What do you have planning planned here in the future? And maybe what have you done in the past that you might want to run again, maybe something that you want to try, maybe in a more effective way? So in order to be effective when you are launching something, it's really important that you have the correct plan in place, right? So we can build something. If you've ever heard, if you build it, they will come. We know that's a fallacy. We do need to make sure that we are performing the right steps and that we're not just doing this in a reactive way, right? So I want to create a thing. And now that I've created it, I want to jump out into the world and tell everyone about this amazing thing that they could buy from me. That's actually not the order of operations and it's important that we address these in the proper order so that you can really get enough people in front of the offer that you've created in a way that works to grow your business and deliver those results that you can deliver to your people. So the first phase, and we'll go over this again, we do have this in a checklist format that you'll be able to download here in just a bit. But our first phase is four to six weeks ahead of your launch. All right, four to six weeks ahead of your launch, we're going to focus on creating opportunity for our launch. I would actually argue that you can go even further back, eight weeks, 10 weeks. If you do not have a list that you are actively emailing, if you do not have an engaged and active social media following, right? So if you're not showing up weekly already in email, you're not showing up daily already on social. I would argue you could go eight to 12 weeks with this to make it even more effective. Because what we really want to make sure that we're doing is not focusing just on what we have right now, but creating expansion, creating opportunity so that we can get the best outcome possible. Alright, so our goals of phase one are first, to get people used to seeing you in their inbox and in their feeds as a go-to person that leads conversations that matter to them. In this phase, we're also focusing on cultivating attention, interest, and trust, right? So we want them to see us, but then we want them to actually be curious about what it is that we're about, things that we're talking about. And we want them to really feel when they see us, a sense of knowing that we are someone that can help them, right? The goal here is to grow that list of leads and to nurture that list of leads, right? So that's going to be engaging people on social media and moving them onto your email list. And then for your email list, showing up consistently, right? So again, those people have a you habit in their inbox. They are used to opening up their inbox and opening your messages, right? On a daily basis or on a consistent basis at least. And of course, we want to nurture, we want those people to grow closer to us, right? For them to see that we are someone who really can help them. And it's really important to note here, even if you have just built a holy grail of resources that you just so want to get out there into the hands of the people that need them, right now is not the time to talk about the thing that you're going to sell. Nobody, and this is, this is gonna hurt a little bit to hear, but it's true. Nobody cares about the thing that you made yet. Okay? You could have just dumped six months into creating something amazing, but you know what? If we haven't done this work yet, if we haven't achieved those goals we just talked about, nobody cares, right? So we need to get them to care. And the way that we do that is by gathering their attention and beginning conversations that are relevant to them. They can start to see and feel that when they see us, when they show up where we are, they are served, they are fed, right? So that's what we have to do first. So our to-dos for phase one are first, we need to create something that serves and that nurtures on autopilot. If you don't have a funnel in place already, I highly recommend you go ahead and get one done. I'll be showing you guys here in just a bit where you can go and learn how to get that done super quickly and get oiling. So we're going to create a lead magnet. And this lead magnet really ideally should have something to do with what your offer does. So if your offer, let's just say, is a, and I'll just use an example here in the list. Let me see, we've got, let's see, we've got a brand partner bootcamp, awesome, a mini course, uh, working on a program. Fantastic. Okay, so then let's look at this as, I'm going to go use case specific. And I want this to be customer focused, right? It's going to be awesome to create things that are for your brand partners. But we, with Young Living, it really is important to first cross the bridge into product use. If we're talking about promoting to a wider audience, right? So let's just say, for instance, you are here right now, it's summertime. It's, in fact, it is summer solstice. So right now, we are going to be focusing on, on, let's see, we're going to be focusing on creating positive transformations in our daily life through simple steps. And this is going to be for moms of kids who are currently maybe out of school for the summer. You want to make sure that you aren't dropping the ball on all of the important things that you need to do while the kids are out of school. So this is going to be perhaps a challenge. That's the thing we're going to offer. And then maybe the freebie that we create is going to be a simple daily checklist for summer mornings for moms whose kids are home from school, right? So we're going to create a simple little checklist that is going to be ultimately a part of that solution that we offer, right? So we'll have like that big challenge. We're going to sell it maybe for 150 bucks or something like that. But we're going to offer first, here's this little checklist, right? Use this checklist. It's going to help you make sure that every morning when you wake up, you aren't dropping the ball, right? So we're going to promote the funnel that delivers that lead magnet in your content, right? So if you're creating blog posts, you're creating videos, social posts, et cetera, we're going to be promoting that funnel. Because this is something that we need to be doing anyway, right? We really want to make sure that we are putting value first out into the world and we're using that value to gather people's contact info, people who are interested in that value that we offer. So from that list that you're building, you're going to be emailing them once per week at minimum, right? And that's nurturing. Again, we're not promoting the thing we're selling yet. We are getting them into a you habit. That's opening your emails when you send them. You also want to make sure that you're showing up in their feeds, so posting on social at least once a day. And then make sure that again, in this eight to 12 or six to eight, four to six week period, depending on the size of your list, make sure that you are creating consistently high value content, again, not promotional content, content that serves. So things like blog posts, podcasts, video, et cetera. And you want to show up starting conversations and engaging in conversations that matter to the person that you ultimately want to sell this offer to, the thing that you have created, that you have ultimately created for that person. Now, in the second phase, we are going to go ahead and start building out our marketing assets. Now you can do these two things concurrently. It's just important that you understand that the putting yourself out there with content and engagement is the most important thing you need to be doing, especially if you don't already have a large engaged list. So phase two is at least two to four weeks ahead of time, you're going to build out your marketing assets. And our goals in this phase are to use technology, AKA get oiling, to create the best possible outcomes. So here we're going to expose as many people as possible to your offer. And then we're going to repeat that exposure because people need to be shown something many times before they say yes to it, right? So that they can convert. And then we want to make sure that as we are in this promotional phase, that we aren't alienating anyone that this might not be for, or that we aren't causing people to run for the hills and opt out of our list entirely. We did all of that work to get people onto our list. We don't want to create a situation where they feel trapped and the only thing they can do is unsubscribe from you completely. So how are we going to do that? Show you in just a second. But just remember, this is something that you don't have to wait until two to four weeks ahead to create. You want a little bit more time, you can absolutely create this much earlier. Just make sure that you are engaging in that content engagement phase throughout. Right? So make sure that you are creating those opportunities. Now, what we're going to do here, and again, I have a checklist with links that even has a resource bundle for you. It's going to be really helpful for you here. And we'll go over that here in just a bit. First thing we're going to do is create ourselves a sales page for our offer. We are working backwards toward the thing that we want. So the first thing we do is create a sales page. This is where they will ultimately convert, right? This is the end of the rainbow. Create that pot of gold there first. Then we're going to create a little page, or you're actually going to get a version of this that you can modify in the resource bundle. This is a preferences updated page. This is just a really simple confirmation page that you can send people to after they have adjusted their preferences with you. So in this case, they're going to actually be clicking a link inside of the sales campaign we create that says, I would rather not receive these emails, but I'd like to keep receiving the other ones that you send. And when they click that, we need to send them somewhere. This is where we send them. We then need to create the automation that accomplishes that, that's going to remove the people who say, I don't want sales messages about this offer. It's going to remove them from that campaign so they don't receive the messages anymore. And then it's going to send them to that page that we just created. We'll use a saved reply so that we can very easily pop that information straight into all of our campaign messages. And then of course, finally, the thing that does all of the heavy lifting for you is your campaign. We're going to have a campaign that promotes and sells your offer. And each message in that campaign is going to include that link to that automation that allows them to not receive the campaign messages anymore if they choose. Now let's talk a little bit about the sales campaign. This really is a critical piece of the puzzle here. So this is going to be a date based campaign because we really should be pointing people toward an offer that's going to expire. Otherwise, what reason do they have to take action now, right? So it's going to be a date based campaign. We're going to use that saved reply we create to really easily add that automation link for folks to opt out. And we're going to put that at the very top of each message. And in our messages, we're going to be writing to engage, not just to sell. We are selling, it's time in this case with the sales campaign. It is time to talk about the thing that you created, but we're not just showing up and saying, here's all the things it does by now and doing that over and over again. We're going to maybe go in and tell a story about a problem, right? That maybe you used to have or a client used to have, and you're going to talk about how you solve that problem and tell them that they can go solve that problem right now if they buy this thing that you created, right? That's the idea. We want to engage them and show them that we're talking about them. We're not talking at them. This is a way for them to understand that we're trying to invite a dialogue with them, right? So we're going to write in these emails to engage them, not just to pitch the thing that we've sold. We're going to make sure that we are sending out a message at least every four days. But I would recommend doing this a bit more frequently, especially if you are only going to make this offer available for a week to two weeks, right? So more often is better. This is why we are including that saved reply that has the automation for people to opt themselves out. If it's too much for them, they could say goodbye to the campaign without saying goodbye to you. And then ultimately, the idea here in our messaging is to create a crescendo of call to action. Crescendo meaning we're starting quiet and we're growing in volume. And so essentially what we're doing here is we're starting out by introducing the thing that we've created. And we're doing this not with a great deal of urgency, but certainly with a great deal of context, right? Of relevant information. And then as the messages go on, we're going to really be punctuating how important it is that they take action on this right now, that they buy now, right? So I wouldn't use buy now language specifically, say, in the first few emails, but in the last few, 100%, I would. I would definitely get into more explicit sales language in the latter part of the campaign as opposed to the beginning, then creating that crescendo. Now finally, in phase three, this is one to two weeks ahead of making your offer available. This is the promotion thing. This is when you get to tell the world what you've created. So our phase three goals are to get the word out to your list. And we're going to do that by applying your campaign. We'll get the word out on social by showing up consistently. We'll share the link to your sales page. And I'll show you a way that you can even include your existing funnels in this process as well. Giving people the option not just to go buy, but for you to grab them and put them on your list. Now, at this point, you get to go and shout from the rooftops about this amazing thing that you've created and how much it's going to help the people you've created it for. This is the time, right? This is one to two weeks. This is when it is available for sale. Not in the periods before, not a day before, right? At this point, we are ready to go and it's going to be available for one to two weeks, right? So our to-dos for this phase are to filter your contacts for appropriate tags and then add that sales campaign. Now, what does appropriate tags look like? Namely, these need to be people who have opted in specifically to receive messages from you that pertain to things that you might be selling. These are most likely going to be folks who have opted in via a funnel already, right? So they've, they've gotten your lead magnet and they want to hear from you, or they're wanting to know about your next blog post or podcast or whatever kind of content you're creating, right? This is not, I repeat, not your entire list of contacts, especially if you are someone who has already uploaded your virtual office file. You do not have permission to send marketing emails to everyone in your virtual office file, right? I mean, technically legally you might because they're in your business, but the better thing to do is to filter for the people who definitely have said, I want to hear from you, right? So we're going to filter for them. You can also take that sales campaign and attach it to any funnels that you're actively promoting. So any that are on your website currently or that you have placed out there in the world that are generating leads. You can just add this campaign in addition to the campaign that is attached to that funnel. And then get out there and actively talk about and promote this offer on social. Share links to the, the sales page, share links to landing page to your funnel. If you've attached the sales campaign to it and get out there and talk about it. Share testimonials, post at least once a day on social. And, and of course, your, your campaign is going to be doing the heavy lifting for you in terms of sending out the emails to your list. And then create short form content as well. So create reels. If you're on Instagram, go live on different platforms to engage and promote and talk about this thing that is available for people to purchase. Now let's go take a look at our resources. Really excited to share this stuff with you guys. This is a comprehensive checklist. And if this thing will let me do it, I'm going to change my share. Here it is. Okay. Alright, so this is our marketing checklist. And if you actually click on any of these hyperlinks for campaign, automation, save reply, et cetera. Let me go ahead and copy my, my link right here, just in case I lose it. Yeah, I'm going to open this in a new tab. You also have a resource bundle. So all of the things that need to be created are already created for you to an extent. So they're already made and connected together. You just need to make them your own. So let's go take a look at this. First, of course, these are the things that you want to do before we start creating the things. I'll be showing you in a moment. But if you do not have a funnel yet, which is this first step here, I want to invite you to come over here to the Success Academy. And then under online resources and courses, I want you to click on this lead generation workshop. The lead generation workshop is going to take you through in brief and succinct format, how you can create a funnel really in an afternoon. This is really simple and, and effective. And this will work really well with what we're discussing here. Okay? So get that done if you haven't already. And then of course, you can go through and check these other things off the list as you go. Now first, let's discuss our campaign. Now the order of operations here is to make your life easy. So the first thing that we're doing is creating the campaign because we need to create an automation that removes the campaign. So what I did is I created one and I'll actually show you exactly what I did to do that. I went right over here and this is going to be for my awesome challenge. And I prefer email. I'm going to create the campaign. And now I'm not going to do anything with it. I'm going to actually come back over to settings and contacts. I'm going to create an automation and this is going to remove that campaign. Alright, so this is remove from my awesome challenge, sales campaign. Alright, so I'm going to go add action and I'm going to remove that campaign. There's my awesome challenge. I'm going to remove that. Now I do need to send them somewhere when they click this link. I'm going to send them over to this preferences updated page. If you don't have a page like this already, let me show you what it looks like. You actually do have this available to you. I'm going to actually go find this in my pages. But you'll see that it is this page right here called preferences updated. You do have a copy of this available to you. So let me go to preferences updated custom page and I'll show you what it looks like. Super, super simple. You can have your, any information that you want to share here, maybe center that. If you prefer, you could certainly make this two columns, have a picture of yourself, maybe have a button here for people to get in touch. If you prefer, so I can change this, maybe hyperlink it and put in hashtag contact just to pop up a contact field and maybe turn that into a button. Right? So, here we go. So this is our preferences updated page. Again, it's just a really, really, really simple confirmation page. It's available by link only. It does show the header and footer. You could opt to remove those. Alright, so that's where we're going to send them to in this automation. So now we need to create a saved reply to make our lives easy for adding this opt-out message into our campaign. So to do that, we're going to go create a new saved reply. And this is going to be opt-out of my awesome challenge, uh, sales campaign. And here I'm going to say, um, let's see, my awesome challenge is now open. I'll be sending a few more emails like this. If you'd prefer to only get the usual from me, simply click here to opt out of these messages. Alright, so click here is where I'm actually going to link my automation. So this is where it's going to go. I don't think if we go to the automation field right here, that it's going to automatically change this text. But this is where we want, we want to put it, click here, right here. So I'm going to go here to automations. And where is my awesome, here we go, remove from my awesome challenge sales campaign. And I want click here to be the language. And you can see it actually shows up here. What I'm going to do is just grab this and copy it, this code here. And I'm going to delete this text that was generated. And I'm going to hyperlink this here. Click here. Create a link with it and paste that in. And you can see it's just in brackets. You could also go to the automation itself and copy this and just make sure it's put into the URL field. Now, another thing that I recommend that you do here is link your sales page here. So this obviously is not a sales page training. We do have training on sales pages and we have templates for sales pages. But let's go take a quick look at our, our sales page template that I have available here for you. Highly recommend that you use one with a countdown timer. In fact, I think the name of the one that I've shared with you is sales page with countdown timer. There it is. Right? And it actually has prompts for you throughout. You've got your, your editable countdown timer here. And you can put all the great information about your program here. So I'm actually going to link to that page here in the saved reply. So here, I'm going to copy this because it's going to replace my text when I go and find that from the dropdown menu. That was called sales page with countdown timer. There it is. And then I'm going to go paste right here, my original text. So there we go. My awesome challenge is now open. They could click that. I'll be sending a few more emails like this. You prefer to make it the usual opt-out here. Alright, so I'm going to italicize the whole of this. Because I want it to look a little bit different, just sort of like an aside at the beginning of my message. So I'm going to create that saved reply. Now we can go back to the campaign that we created. So going back to campaigns, I'm going to go find my challenge. A lot of challenges in here. Let's go find my awesome challenge. Here we go. Right? So the next thing that we need to do here is start building our campaign. And here we can, you know, put, obviously we want to put a subject line in. I'll say, remember when Mondays were a little bit easier? And, and then I'm going to put the body of my message here, but before I do anything, I'm actually going to go and insert my saved reply. Right? So here I'm going to go find opt-out of my awesome challenge. Here we go. opt out of my awesome challenge. Here we go. And then I'm gonna put my greeting here up top. So I'm gonna say hi, I'm gonna say their name. Hope you're having a peaceful morning. And then I'm gonna get into the rest of my message down here. So I'm gonna share a story. I'm going to um, you know, and then I'm ultimately going to promote the thing that I'm selling, right? So um learn more and get started. Here. And this is where I'm going to maybe add a button. And here again, I'm gonna go find that sales page with countdown timer. And make that a button just to make it stand out just a little bit more. Right? So I'm gonna create that and I actually want my first message to be a day one and I'll show you why here in just a bit. So I'm gonna make a couple of duplicates of this, just so we can have a few things to work with. So we want to have our day one. Uh this is maybe gonna be day two. And this can be uh day three. And you want to, of course, have these going out over the the full length of time that you will be uh sort of crescendoing from an introduction to what you're selling all the way through to this is your last chance to buy. Right? So what I want to do is based on when my uh my offer is uh is going to be um like the the doors close. So I'm gonna call this doors close and save it and go back. So based on when the doors close, uh I'm gonna make this maybe day fourteen. I want to make sure that this is accurate to the date, right? So if I come over here on a specific date and I know that the doors are going to close on my offer, maybe I'm setting this up for August. The doors are going to close on the thirtieth. So if I'm going to go two weeks before, I can come over here and check this out. Uh and and play around with the dates to see if it's gonna work correctly. And actually, I have selected correctly here. So here's when our doors close. Here's when the first message is going to be sent. So what we're doing here is using day one as our first message because we're going to be applying this ahead of time. Once we have this complete, we're going to apply it to our contacts when we're ready to do it. And it's not going to, like, if you decide to to apply this to your content, your contacts at two in the morning, because that's when you're able to be up and work, working, that's totally fine. This isn't going to impact the time that it sends. Uh so we're gonna start with day one. Anyway, but you're gonna fill in the blanks all the way in between here, making sure that this aligns correctly with what it is that you are uh are offering and when the door is closed for it. And that really is it. That's how it all ties together. Uh you're going to have, of course, in your campaign messages, uh in each one of the messages, you're going to have this saved reply up at the top. You could always go up here to saved replies and find it and insert it easily. Uh and then, of course, you also want to make sure you have a link to your uh to your offer. Right to the the sales page where you're making the offer. Alright, so I'm excited to see if you guys have, oh, you know, let me show you one more thing. Just so uh we're we're fully clear on everything. So if I go over to view Jane's site, I did mention maybe adding the campaign to your existing offers. So here is uh a freebie that she's offering on the front page of her site. Uh and there's uh there's a free challenge that she's offering here. So in addition to that, I actually want to uh to go in and offer uh or you know, connect the current sales campaign. This is, of course, a matter of preference. If that's something that you would like to do, feel free to do that. I'm gonna go over to the homepage here under pages. And there it is. And the way that you would attach this campaign, if you wanted to add it in addition to the one that you have set up, is you're gonna go to wherever it is. And then you're going to go uh to whatever happens when a lead registers. Now, you're probably already going to have a campaign here. I hope you do. This is uh something that we've, this page we've used as a template, so I didn't include a campaign with it. So if you already have a campaign attached, which you should, we're gonna wanna create just an additional automation that applies that new campaign here. And you're gonna attach it there. So you can just go to add automation. And then you can add sales campaign for my awesome challenge. And then you can go and find that campaign. There we go. We don't need to add anything else to it because this is just gonna be happening automatically in the background. Alright, and so here we go. If we come right back over here uh to this, uh I'm gonna actually refresh this. If I come back over here to settings under leads, after they register, you're gonna have your normal uh lead nurture campaign here. And then I'm gonna go find that awesome challenge. And we'll add that campaign. Just make sure that you are removing this uh from here uh once the periods with the sales period runs out. And that is optional. Again, it's not something that you have to do. Uh but it certainly can be something uh beneficial to take advantage of any existing traffic that you may have coming into your website. Uh or if any other promotional opportunities overlap uh with this period. Alright, let me see if we've got any questions here. Feel free, please, to put them into the Q and A. I'll be able to see them more readily. Uh but I do see one here from Anna. Uh so if someone clicks a lead magnet for a specific item, they should be added to my weekly email list. Never done that, but no, I'm gonna. Yeah, yes, absolutely. And what I would do is if somebody opts in for a lead magnet and you haven't had like a general mailing list tag attached to uh that landing page, page or form, uh then what you could do is you can go into your campaigns and I'll actually show you here. If you go into your campaign for that offer, you can actually find the people who are opted into it. And from there, you can go ahead and um and add uh your your contacts. You can actually click it. I'm not gonna fully load that here because I I think there are some folks with real information that's in here. Uh so but from your contacts, you can actually go in, uh it'll show the people who have opted into that campaign. Uh and then you can actually go into actions uh and then um bulk contact actions. You can add that general mailing list tag to them right here. So if you haven't been doing that already, there is a way, of course, for you to go in and um and add folks to a list like that. So it's easier for you to filter for all of your opt-in leads uh in the future. Awesome. Let me know uh if you guys have anything that you are looking to launch and you want some specific guidance on what that might look like for you. Um if you wanna offer something that's free, here's what I would do. You've, number one, your sales page does not need to be super involved. Right? Uh so the page that I would use in lieu of a sales page, if what you want to promote is something that is free, uh we actually have it in our templates. If we come over here to pages and we go to add a new page, I'm gonna go over here to coming soon or let me see. Like a registration. Here we go. This one right here. Workshop registration with countdown timer. Use something more like this. Much less involved. If it's free, um you also don't have to, you know, collect payment here. This is what it looks like when it's published. You can change the colors, et cetera, here. Uh but if you have something that's free, create a page like this. Uh and then I would look at the um I would just shorten the windows of the phases down, right? So you don't necessarily need to go eight to twelve weeks in advance. It could just be a few weeks. And then, of course, the uh the period of time that the opportunity is open to register, you could maybe shrink down to a week, right? Which means that your campaign that's really promoting it might be a week long or maybe a week and a half long or something like that. So those are the changes. If you want to offer something free, you still need to make sure that you're putting in a period of time ahead of time uh to really create opportunity. Right? So that you're not just working with however big your list is now, because most of them aren't listening to you. Most of them are not paying attention to you and that's just how the stuff works. Right? You want to get more of them listening to you, right? So that's what you already have. And then you want to get more people on the list, right? So be focusing on doing that uh at the beginning. Make sure that the page that is offering the free thing, even if it's a free thing that you're offering uh is something that ideally has some kind of a countdown timer on it to encourage action right now. Uh and then, of course, you do still want to create a similar campaign with that crescendo, uh but it would be for a shorter period of time. Okay, Paula says I have a monthly subscription on my vault. Awesome. Um my question is, how do people opt out of their subscription if they want? This is a good question. I believe uh that's gonna be when you're, when they're logged into your member area. They have sort of like a profile, right? Um Greg, is that correct? Like, that's that's where they would go to uh to to opt themselves out, right?
Yes, there's a my account link kind of uh on the desktop anyway. It's in the upper right hand corner and you can click on that. And then there's a little sidebar that shows all the subscriptions and which vaults they go with and they can manage their payment methods and cancel and and all that. And when they do cancel, I believe it gives them to the end of the month. So like they get everything that they paid for and then it'll cancel them at the end of the period. So.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that question. Alright, Debbie, I'm gonna find you and bring you out here.
Okay.
Hi, how can we help?
Um well, um originally when I decided like, oh, I have to get on, like I have my website. I haven't done anything really with it. I've put some events. I just don't have people coming on. Um but then I just recently became a travel agent uh remotely. So I was thinking about incorporating both the my young living and my travel agent on one page because I think I can attract one to the other and vice versa. So I was looking at that. If I do that, though, it looks like I have to get a custom page for the front because that's all basically oil-based, which is a good thing when before I was a travel agent. So um I was looking at that and then I was interested in like the landing pages, uh learning a little bit more about that. I am more of a texter. I am in a different program than I've been for years. So I've been using that more um texting people versus emailing people. Um I feel like I get a better response with that. So I don't really do a whole lot of emailing and uh unfortunately I've prepaid for that, so I'm kinda in that game for the moment. But I also feel like having a website is super important.
Yeah, so you can have the best of both here. Um I it sounds like what you're probably doing with the texting services is more um serving your young living folks, right?
Yes.
Awesome. Would you say that you really have any leads uh that are non-young living um? Well, basically, would you say you have anyone in the texting platform that you've been using that are not your young living customers or in your virtual office in your organization?
Well, I feel like some of my young living people will also be and I know uh travel people, so they'll be both.
Got you. Yeah, so um so first things first, I would definitely um think about how you would want to present yourself as sort of like under the bigger umbrella, where the bigger umbrella is, uh Debbie has oils and Debbie also can help you um you know, have a have an awesome vacation, right? So um so then you you want to be thinking about yourself as sort of a lifestyle brand. Uh and and creating uh a website uh that that represents that. And then you basically have the opportunity for them to explore, you know, vacation ideas or inspiration on your blog and then, you know, wellness stuff. But basically, you want to figure out what that intersection is and who it's for and and have that be something that shows up on your homepage. Um for the for the the lead magnet, sort of the strategy for lead generation, um because you are doing things that are, I mean, they're not wholly divergent, but in a way they are. Um you want to make sure that you have some kind of a lead magnet that encompasses that sort of lifestyle brand. So that way it would be really easy in your general mailing list to talk about grease, but then to talk about oregano, maybe in the same email, right? Uh and uh and so you want to try to cultivate uh some kind of an offer free, like a opt-in, give me your email address and I'll give you my thing, that allows you a logical opportunity to talk about both at any point in time. And then, of course, you do have the ability, like sort of on those respective separate pages where you maybe talk about wellness here. Here's a wellness lead magnet. Talk about travel here. Here's a travel lead magnet, where you would actually be tagging these people as this is very specifically a travel lead versus this is very specifically a wellness lead, just in case there is, you know. Like, for instance, if you've got folks who are on the young living side, you know, who are maybe interested in more travel tips, uh it just gives you an opportunity to kind of uh serve them um differently. But yeah, in terms of how you're showing up on the front end on your site, uh definitely um definitely some kind of a homepage that can base that lifestyle concept. And then how you communicate, um text is great, especially if you've already got people used to getting texts from you. So if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Definitely continue texting those folks. Uh but with Get Oiling, um you have the opportunity to build an email list, which uh if you're trying to build a brand long term, is really important. And on any of your campaigns, you do have the ability to send via text, send via email, both or either or even in the same campaign. So um you know, there there are certainly ways for you to you know, kind of provide that opportunity for folks to to get information from you the way they want it. That said, depending on what the content of those messages look like, it may may look a little different, right? So you know, a text message, obviously, that's made to be sent as a text message is gonna be formatted quite differently than uh maybe a longer form email.
Correct. Alright, thank you. Um I'm trying to think. So then if I do do the extra page and I I do like make it both travel and young living on one my website, then I would have actually two different vaults then, right? I would have a vault for information about young living and then I would have a vault about information about travel. Yes?
You could. You could. Um no, you you know, you you definitely don't need to. I think that you definitely ought to, depending on how far along you are in growing young living, you you want to definitely consider having a young living vault because there's a lot of information. You want to an organized way to share all of the young living things in one place and to have conversations that you know, you wouldn't necessarily have on social media. Uh so so definitely having a young living vault is a great idea. If you want to, if it is in your goals to build a community of people who love talking about and discussing travel, then you could have a travel vault. But I don't know that it's necessarily as important materially uh as as having a young living vault is. I think a young living vault is really important to have. Um you may find that it that it becomes valuable, maybe as a, like as a value add for your uh for your travel clients. Um you know, maybe that's a place where you keep tips and articles and things like that, special links. Um but yeah, it's definitely not something that you have to do. What I would make sure that you do is um have a homepage again with a brand that expresses connection with a person whose values intersect in that Venn diagram, right? Just like yours do with with the travel and oils. Um but I wouldn't be explicit like travel and oils, right? Um not on the homepage at least. Maybe in your menu or maybe somewhere on your homepage, you could say you want to learn about how I can help you create an ex, you know, an experience you'll never forget, head over here. And then you send them to a page that's maybe very explicitly about travel. Uh and then however you prefer to sort of uh explore wellness conversations, you could send them to any number of different pages that are more specifically that.
Okay, alright, great. I will, I appreciate your time. Um unfortunately, in order to change that page, I have to upgrade to the sixty-nine dollar uh deal, right? Uh a month? In order to have a custom front page?
Yeah, so um I believe if, unless there's another Debbie, Debbie Hill in the system. Uh if you're on the basic plan, uh which, oh yeah, if you're on the basic plan and you aren't maybe using all of your pages, uh then you know, you could certainly maybe just swap out a page that you already have. And I think it's like ten, you have ten pages on a basic plan. Um to swap out one of the ones that you're not really using and make that your homepage.
Okay, so so the pages would be like my homepage, like the front of my website right now is like I picture of like going green or or something like that.
Right, right, right. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I could change that by so like, my daughter created a um a graphic for me in Canva.
Okay.
Um so I would really, it's kind of got travel and uh oils on the page very discreetly.
Okay.
So um I was thinking about maybe putting that on. Could I do that? Could I bring that in?
So you technically could. It depends on how the image is formatted. Uh if if the resolution of the image uh is is one that is large enough to display correctly on different devices, It's kind of possible, generally speaking, um, what you wanna do, like Canvas, like if you're used to using Canva. It's easy to create things in Canva. If you're used to using Get Oiling, it's easy to create things in Get Oiling. And so what I would essentially do is take the design that was created in Canva and replicate it on a page and get whaling. So that way you've got something that's going to work just as well on a desktop device, which is the sort of widescreen view that you see right now. As well as shrunk down, uh, to a, a, you know, a tall and narrow resolution, which would be like a, um. A mobile device. That's kind of the, the, the trick, the tricky thing about, uh, utilizing images. Um, you can use. Aspects of it, right? So individual images that are used, maybe say in backgrounds and different parts. Of the design that your daughter created could be incorporated into, uh, page design here. What I would maybe consider doing, if you're open to it, uh, is maybe if, if you really like it. Uh, just you shoot a message to our concierge team and, uh, maybe share that image and they could even quote you on recreating a page. Like that, uh, from a Canva design. Uh, and then once you have that in one of these pages and, and Get Oiling. All you gotta do is use this set as home. And that will become your new homepage.
Okay, beautiful. Okay. So, um, I'm pretty savvy, so, um, I could probably do it. She created it as a Facebook, uh, banner when she did it in Canva, um. So I was, I could, I was hoping to maybe just pull that in and see how that would work. Uh, instead of recreating it. Could I take that, uh, banner from Canva and make it a homepage?
You could take the banner and put it into, and by the way, Greg put this into the chat and it deserves being said out loud. If you wanna add extra pages. Even at basic, you don't have to go up to the higher plan level. You can just reach out to support at getoiling.com and have more pages added for a nominal fee on a monthly basis. Uh, but, but yeah, so basically what you would do, I'll just use this page that's already existing here. Uh, is you would create a section. Uh, and it's gonna really depend on. The, uh, the image and what's in it. Uh, but here's a, a one column, no header. You'll have to play around with it here, but basically you, what you could do is you could maybe attach that image. As the background of the section, so like, like this. Right? But then you do need to increase, say, padding, for instance, um. And, uh, and also, uh, choose to center the image, right? Um, but, but the, the thing about this is, again, especially if it's a complex image that has, say, text on it. Um, the way it shows up here. Depending on the device that you're on is going to look quite different, right? So you see how, like, we're cutting your arms off here on mobile, right? Uh, so, so yeah, you, you could certainly try it, but the recommendation would be, let's just say for instance, that this image was something that you created in Canva. You would maybe wanna isolate, uh, like just that background that you use. I know this is a real photo of you. Uh, but just the, just the field background would be what you use here in the background. And then you would actually insert an image onto the front of this. That, uh, that moves, uh, and adjusts as, as the, the resolution sizes are, are changing, uh, so it's.
So I can actually do that myself in here?
Yes, yes.
Beautiful.
Well, you, you do need to isolate the different photo elements in Canva.
Right.
Okay, then you add those things here, layer them however you want them.
For that?
We've, we've actually done quite a few Canva trainings. So if you go to, um, our. If you go to the Success Academy to our previous trainings, this live training and replays. And just type in Canva, you'll find that there are quite a few. There's also, you could also type in the word design, um. And I think actually one of the most recent ones that we did. Um, oh yeah, and this actually has a concierge team. Th- this is the most recent one I would probably recommend.
Okay.
Uh, but here's also mastering page design with Canva and Get Oiling. That's actually the most recent. So this, this would be the one I would use.
Okay, great. I thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Sure thing, sure thing.
Alright, I think that was really all my questions.
Alright, fantastic. Well, I hope you'll come back again and I can't wait to see what you do with that.
Thank you so much. Yes, I listen all the time. Usually I can't make it in person, but I listen to the replays all the time. So thank you for recording them. I appreciate that.
Glad you can join us finally. Alright, uh, Paula asked, uh, where to find the resource bundle. So the resource bundle, if you open up that checklist. That, uh, we created for you. Um, they're hyperlinked. So once you get to the point in the process here of, uh, of. Executing steps in Get Oiling, so creating your campaign, your automation, save reply, these pages. You're going to find these hyperlinks. And this is what's going to take you straight over to that resource bundle. So if you click any of these, you'll go to the resource bundle. And I do link off to the checklist here. So if you lose the checklist. You'll be able to find it. And, uh, once we have this video uploaded, I'm actually going to hyperlink this training. Uh, i- in YouTube, uh, here as well. So both of these, uh, will be cross, cross-referenceable, uh, into the future. Awesome. Thank you guys so much, um. For, uh, for sticking around, for your attention here today and for your dedication to putting value out into the world and getting oils into homes. Uh, we are so excited, uh, to be a part of your journey and to be with you here every week. We hope you'll join us back here next time. If there's something you would like to learn, let us know. We make creative training just for you. Look forward to seeing you back here same time next week. Take care, everybody.